All right, let's go and get started. Let's go and get started with our work session. We're going to start tonight with a presentation from our good friends at Community Brickworks. Lisa Runway is going to talk to us and Nan too, or other folks.
Ready to see that?
Mm hmm. Yes.
I apologize. Thank you so much. Tell you a little bit about what we do and how we can help the city and how the city can help us. I apologize. I'm a little jet lagged. I just went to see where my dad fought in D-Day. And I just got back into town. So it's middle of the night right now for me. We made these posters actually for a large fundraiser, but it serves a purpose tonight, too. People don't really know that much about Brickworks and exactly what we do, but we do quite a bit, a lot more than people think. We have a food pantry every Wednesday. And we serve about this, we're up to fifty-five families a month. The, we get twenty-five hundred dollars once a month from Midwest Food Bank worth of food. We get donations from churches and individuals, which comes to about forty-two hundred. And then we have to purchase on our own about a thousand dollars worth of food for Brickworks every single month. We distribute about seventy-seven hundred dollars of food per month to an average of about fifty-five families. And that's about a hundred and forty dollars of food per family, which is not much if you have a family to get by. But at least we're helping for families with children because of the United Way grant that we got. We focused on child well-being. We're able to have families come twice a month for a little while, for the first half of the year through that grant. We also have emergency assistance for families in need. And in 2022, we helped about fifteen families in our community with emergency assistance. Assistance would mean rent, utilities, and medical bills totaled about thirteen thousand dollars. And when we do pay, we pay directly to the biller. So the family does not see the money. The money goes directly to the biller. So we've helped quite a few families and Carla does our crisis management. Was it mainly heating this year? Mainly heating. Heating and electric. So we also do backpacks for kids for school. And then we keep a stock of materials to go into those backpacks throughout the year to replenish kids' school supplies. We have a Christmas gifts for families in need. We helped ninety-three kids this year. We pair those kids with families either through churches in Chat Hills, through people in Chat Hills that want to help, through Coco's cupboard, through people in Saranby. We, and we have paired ninety-three kids this year. And we send all of the gifts directly to the families through Brickworks. So the families don't actually meet the families they're shopping for. And we found that works better that way. But we pair the families, get it all set up and run that program. We have a library, which I think has been, Nan couldn't be here tonight, but she has worked tirelessly on that library. We, through grant money, have been able to get two new free computers for resident use. We also have classes going. And Nan said a great job setting up lots of classes. Lori, you taught one. We have chair caning, the second round for chair caning now. We have lots of different classes. We have toddler Tuesdays for kids to come in. And we can offer more. We just need the funding to be able to offer more. And then we also help with community outreach programs, and that would be things like baseball signup is run through our website. And then we cover kids that can't afford the fee. So I think we covered about four this year for baseball signup. We have, we help with the senior lunches that are not going to be quarterly. We bought the chicken for those. We're also, let's see, look at my thing here. We're also helped construct the art room for City Hall. We will be using that for classes. We also worked with the Christmas and fall festivals, put some money into that. And then we also helped Coco's cupboard with a lot of supplies to allow them to pick up animals safely. And then we are a five oh one C three, so we can only get money through funding, through special funds, through churches, through donations, through grant money. And we go through every single bit that we get every single year. And the things that we really are still on our want list are some electricity outside. Perhaps you all know that the side porch has no electricity. There are no outlets out there. There's, so we've bought some wonderful rocking chairs. It'll be lovely to sit out there for people that come to the library, but we need some fans and we need some lights out there. And we need some outlets for our volunteers to be able to have fans on them. And then also, if we could redo this kitchen, it would be great because we could expand classes even further. We can do cooking. We can help seniors. We can, there's so much more we can do. So I'm just letting you know as the city, what our wants and needs are, and we're letting you know what we do and and how we help Chat Hills. Do you have any questions?
Lisa, so as far as the kitchen, if we were to find some grants and help the grants, is that something we could funnel through your group? Is that allowed? Maybe, maybe not.
So the city would correct?
Or maybe in partnership.
In partnership, I'm thinking I'm asking.
So I had asked Lisa to come and give us an update in part because, well, a couple of things. Number one, one of the city services that we provide is a community library. The fact that that's here in the community is one of the reasons we can be a city. So thank you very much for
Yeah, and I didn't tell you how many boxes of books have come out of that library. They've been donated, but it's looking pretty good. And we've also updated to a digital system now. So pretty soon, we won't have that old card system where you had to, yeah, we'll actually be digitalized. So we'll know what we have and what we don't.
So it's one of those nice symbiotic relationships, right? We need the, we need the library here and they need our space. And I asked her too, you know, if there are things that the city could do to help make their services work better, like the electricity or like the kitchen thing. We've been talking about the kitchen a lot, right? Senior services too could use that. We've been trying to leverage that out of Fulton County. So again, appreciate you giving that feedback because we'd love to work with you to try to leverage that money out of somebody.
We'd love it too. Absolutely. Any other questions?
Thank you for all
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys.
I'm going to scoot out if that's okay.
Yes, go take a nap. Next up is our agenda review. And we will have the normal stuff at the beginning. If anybody has any changes that they'd like to the minutes, let me know. We can get those ready for the meeting. We'll be doing two proclamations, one for Memorial Day and one for the Peace Officers Memorial Day. Your riot is happening partly because of that, right? Yeah, awesome. We'll have our normal staff reports and then we will have a public hearing on a, on the event center that we had talked about, Mike or Katie, sorry, I'm going to talk to us about that. You know what? If you just give us a quick overview, and then I have a question for you about where we are in the process.
Listen, Nan.
At the point right at your mouth.
Okay, I'll try to not get too close to it. Okay, so we've heard this a couple of times, but Mr. Justin Robinson is requesting a special use permit to allow an event center large on his twenty-eight point seven acres located on the north side of Wilkerson Mill Road. The building, the event center would consist of two buildings for events and an outdoor kitchen. And he wants to essentially host weddings and other similar type of events and cooking classes. And the planning commission held a public hearing on the thirteenth of April. And at that meeting, the planning commission voted three to zero to recommend deferral of the proposal for additional information.
Okay, and that's what I wanted to get at. So that was what I had heard to had happened at the planning commission meeting, that there were some additional questions that they wanted to get answered before they gave us a recommendation. We don't have a recommendation from them. And my recommendation for us is that we table it for a month to, to allow them time to have that meeting and give us a recommendation. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so that's what I'll ask for at the meeting. Thanks, Katie. Sorry. Still here, yeah, but I'll ask for that. Next up is a ordinance to change the zoning for the movie studio. And Mike, do you want to start us on that?
Yeah, I don't know if anyone's heard about this one, but we have we have an application for rezoning for one thousand six hundred and six acres over on the west side of the city between Campbellton Redwine Road and the Chattahoochee River, south of the Parkway. From RL, which is its current zoning, to HMMU, which is mixed-use Hamlet. In addition to the rezoning, we have an application for three variances and five special use permits. The variances.
And crap, crap, another one too, or turn off, yeah.
The variances. The variances include variance to section five dash six G in the Unified Development Code to increase the maximum open space allowed to be transferred off-site from twenty percent to fifty percent. So this is, we, we allow a development like a Hamlet or Village to meet some of its open space requirements off-site, but there's a limit of twenty percent of the required open space. So this is a request to increase that amount, which would increase their developable footprint onsite, but would create a lot more preservation of land off-site. And the second one is a variance from section six, three dots. See, again, the Unified Development Code to reduce the minimum residential units required in the HMMU district from point five units per acre to zero. And going along with that, to increase the maximum allowable percentage of the property that's devoted to non-residential uses from twenty-five percent down to zero to, I'm sorry, up to a hundred percent. Again, those kind of go hand in hand. The code would have required them to build eight hundred residential units. And this variance would require none and allow them to use the entire developable area on the property for non-residential. And then finally, a variance to eliminate all of the requirements of Article twelve in the Unified Development Code related to thoroughfares. That's what Article twelve is. But that would apply only on the portions of the development that are behind the security gate. So it's basically creating everything in there as their own campus with driveways instead of a community with streets, which seems appropriate behind the, behind the gates. And then the special use permits that they requested are, and special use permits again are for uses that might be compatible in the zoning district, but need a little more, a little more scrutiny. One for motion picture or sound recording facility large, of course, that's the main point of the development. One for a hotel, one for a college university, but professional school, and the intention here is training for professionals who would work in the movie industry. Fourth one for
A trail rather path built to city specifications along the Campbellton Redwine frontage. And that will be started concurrently with, with development on the property. Can we have, can you put up the entrance view, Robbie? Sorry. Yeah. Yes, it is. So we have an elevation from the northern entrance, which is the entrance to the studios, the two entrances off Campbellton Redwine. The north one is for the, for the studio area. Now, the south one, which would follow, would be for the more public area closer to the city park, where you'd have the hotel and the, the retail and publicly accessible areas. So this is again, the view from Campbellton Redwine, the White House that you're familiar with is, is on the left-hand side of that graphic. Can you go to the next one then? The, this, the next view is from the same location, although it's from almost five hundred feet in the air. And we had to go that high in order to show you the the distances back and the relative locations of the studios, the entrance and that sort of thing. While it's not coming up, what it, what it shows you is that the, the studio, the closest studio is over a quarter mile back from Campbellton Redwine. Also shows you the distances back to the, there you go, back to the mail center, which is what you see on the right. It's over seven hundred feet back. And, and then the, the entrance gate. And I think the thing to notice there is that there's a lot of stacking room off of, off of Campbellton Redwine. Traffic obviously is sort of the big issue. South Fulton Parkway and Campbellton Redwine are both state roads, so any improvements have got to be approved and permitted by GDOT. The project will be responsible for acceleration, deceleration lanes at the two entrances. The DRI suggested a series of roundabouts on South Fulton Parkway. I know there was a lot of comment previously that people don't like roundabouts. Remember those are state roads. This is a state plan. It's not our idea. It's not the city's idea. It's what GDOT has had in their plans for, for a long time. But the city is not, will not be paying for any of that. Been a lot of discussion about the amount of traffic to be generated. When you do a DRI, you got to submit traffic generation figures to the, to the state. Not surprisingly, there's not a category in the trip generation manual for film studios. It just doesn't exist. So what they used in this case were warehouses. So in the first place, that, that skewed the number a little bit. But we have, we've tried to go back and get information from studios and look at the realistic number of people that will be in there on a daily basis. It looks like that on a per-stage basis, the average number is between seventy-five and a hundred and twenty-five on an active set. So that should give you an idea of, of the amount of activity onsite. We project that for, after the first two phases are built, there will be just under six hundred trucks, passenger trips per day with thirty-eight truck trucks. Eventually, you get out to three thousand car trucks and a hundred and ninety-four truck trucks. But again, that is based on the best extrapolation we can do of what studios generate as opposed to the DRI figures, which were based on warehouse use. The, a primary benefit of the city obviously will be generation of property taxes. There will be taxes in addition to that with hotel and other things, sales taxes. But in this year or last year, the city collected a total of seventy-eight hundred and sixty-two dollars from property tax on this property. We know what it will be next year because we know what the purchase price is. And so with that, the figure should go to I think it's a hundred and a hundred and thirty-four thousand next year. We have taken the same military and extended that out through all the phases in the development. It goes up incrementally. Eventually, when everything on the site plan is built out, it would be a total of five million nine hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars in property taxes, assuming the military stays the same. So it's, we think that's a significant benefit to the city. We had a meeting last Thursday, which was well-attended. I think there were a lot of people on Zoom as well. I'm going to respond quickly before I finish to some of the questions that were raised then. One is where is the maintenance building? And we've really given that a great deal of thought, but we now have located it and it's on the plan that I think Robbie had up. It's not been added to the hard copy yet, but the answer is it's in the middle. It is in the nestled in the middle of all the studio buildings. It's certainly not visible from Campbellton Redwine or anywhere, or anywhere offsite. Another question that was raised was, could we eliminate the Jones Ferry driveway? That is the northernmost driveway, and as you can see on the site plan, only serves the handful of single-family houses up there. Again, the houses are not for sale. They're not folks that are, that are, the only people that were there would be working onsite. I think that sort of answers the question of how much traffic you would likely have. We're working on an interior connection to get people from the houses to the studio without having to go out on Jones Bridge in Campbellton Redwine, and we'll be able to better respond on that at the next meeting. But there should be very little traffic there. We are not planning to, we're not planning to pave the road. That also came up, the ferry will be, will remain gravel. Let's see. Sort of taking the Lucinda Williams approach to that road. And then the last question, there were some questions from, from a resident across Campbellton Redwine about the relative location of entrance drives and, and these cell lanes and turn lanes to her property. And we are meeting, as I told you, we're meeting with her on Tuesday afternoon to try to understand what her questions are and, and to answer those. So with that, Troy or Taylor and I are happy to answer any questions if you've got them. Thanks.
Just, just for reference, so are the, I'm thinking those couple of yellow buildings next to the first phase, is that the the maintenance system?
It's wider. It's the blue building just below the
Can you scroll down a little bit, Robbie? There it is. Okay.
Blue building that's been added. So it's, it should be very inconspicuous to anybody.
Yeah, that's a good half mile back from the road. All right.
Yeah, okay.
I forgot to ask during the meeting, will that, that first phase entrance, is that also the construction entrance?
Well, that's one of the questions that Jill had, and we're going to, we're going to talk with her. We've got some, and Troy and Taylor, who know a lot more about engineering than I do, are going to go to the meeting. We've got some site distance issues on the road, but we certainly will try to locate it and that and/or a construction entrance that causes this little interference with her access as we can.
And then the, the second entrance on the south side, which will be the public entrance, is that, that's going to happen at a later phase?
That would be a later phase, that's correct.
Carl?
Yes, sir.
Any idea what the state's timeline is going to be on adding these roundabouts and everything, understanding the recent traffic here?
We don't. We're working on that. And Rich, as you may know, we've got, they, they assign percentages of impact at the different locations. Obviously, as you go north on the Parkway, our impact goes down. I sent Mike today a list of possible conditions we could have on, you know, timeline and our contribution. I think that, that we would want to make some, you know, incremental improvements. I mean, for example, at Campbellton Redwine and South Fulton Parkway, if, if they, if, if GDOT is not ready to permit and build a roundabout at the time this is ready to open, I think we would go in and do, you know, turn lane or something that you know, helps with the traffic. We'd obviously rather coordinate it with GDOT, but we don't have a lot of control over them.
We know the condition of the road right now, considering we're going to be the road headed to the, to the studio, considering the amount of impact that's going to happen to that road. And the reason I say that, it's like some of the roads that went to Saranby, at the end of the day, we had to break those all the way down to the bed. Right, so after like a year, say we're a year in, all of a sudden, these roads are destroyed, GDOT's three years out. You know, what, you know, as, as citizens, as people that live here, you know, we don't want to tote that bill.
No, I understand. And it's a state road, so you're not going to be toting that bill. But the question is, how quickly could we get them to respond? And
Well, South Fulton Parkway, we've paved some of that. Some of that's ours, isn't it?
The little, the little end of it, yeah.
The little end of it.
It should go down to cap street. Yeah, but again, we, we've got to coordinate that. All we've got to this point are what they want to do and what percentage we owe for that work being done as far as timing. And, and a DRI, all the improvements that they recommend are tied to the, to the final phase of development. Obviously, that's, that's, that's not good enough. So we've got, we've got to back off from that into, you know, what's done incrementally to keep up with the impact as the phases are developed. And we're, we're in the process of trying to do that.
Other questions?
I just wanted to comment and say, so many residents have, have contacted me to, and say, thank you for that for, for two meetings, one last year and, and then this one recently, that they felt they had a lot of questions answered and they just wanted to wanted me to thank the project team out there.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I hope so. We'll, as I said, we're meeting with somebody next week. And if, to the extent that you all have other questions or hear from people that are concerned, let me know and we're proud to address.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate the continuing to dig into the traffic stuff too, right? Because that's one of the things I've been also digging into, looking at some of the current base rates on the roads that are out there. What the incremental impact is. Again, I think people think this is more than it is.
Well, one thing, you know, Troy told me this today, that when you do, again, when you do the traffic study, you've got to assume an increase in background traffic, which has got, if this thing never gets built, how much more traffic getting ahead? And that was three point nine percent per year. So you take what's out there. Obviously, that compounds itself, but there are, there's going to be a good bit more traffic.
Right.
And the traffic you got is not from Chattahoochee Hills.
No, that's right. All right, thank you. All right, next is going to be the historic marker sign thing, Robbie, is that you're talking about that? Or is it someone else?
I don't want, I don't want to take Brian's thunder. Brian Gross with the store commission, you know, he's, he's done all the work on it. We've been working together actually on it, but this has been a process that started a few years ago. And Brian's kind of picked up that baton and he's carrying it and he's got some good information to share with you tonight.
Awesome.
Mayor and City Council, thank you for the opportunity. Did you all get in your pocket? Did you get a handout? You want me to walk you through it, or do you have specific questions about the material?
You know what? Why don't you just give us the headline on kind of how many and where, right? The, I mean, we've talked about this stuff before, but
We have. We, I'm glad we're at this point now. We've identified, I think, ten was the original starting number. This would be number one. We the process is kind of going through kind of a ping pong match over the last year. If you remember, I think it was in June, July timeframe last year, the signs were going to be produced by the same company that produced the wayfinding and council was not happy same company that produced the wayfinding and council was not happy with their rendering. So that pivoted to the metal state type markers.
The more traditional.
And that's where we we went from there. We were asked for content and we didn't find out until recently that when we provided the content, a vendor hasn't been selected. So we kind of had to back step and start that process. So we did, we contacted three reputable vendors in that space, keeping in mind that it's a very customized commodity, not no two companies have exactly the same templates. But we did contact three. They were Southwell in Texas, Sua in Ohio and Lake Shore in Erie, Pennsylvania. And we did get like quotes based on what they had available. Southwell does not have any templates to choose from, use completely one hundred percent custom. Lake Shore and Sua both had templates you could choose from. So we took one that's comparable, had them all quote comparable as we could, apples to apples the best we could. And the quotes came in quite differently. But at the end of the day, we felt extremely comfortable with Lake Shore because they're the only ones that can provide us with a digital rendering. So we can see what that's going to look like and make edits back and forth before it's cast. The others can't do that. And that was a big, big game changer for us. Their sign is slightly bigger, larger sign, which that's why the pricing is a little bit higher. It's not exactly the same specs as a Sewa, which is the lower bid. You do have a rendering in that packet that is a rendering based on what we gave them to quote. They are cast, cast aluminum, double sided and I don't know, we we've been under the impression that there could possibly be a logo, city logo change at some point in the near or nearer future. That's why we did put in into this quote a metal etching of the logo, not a cast, so that if it changes, we can just spend three hundred dollars and get a new etching, pop it out and put it in, and we stay current on our logo. If that's not an issue, then we can back that off the price. I don't see how that may an issue is a historical marker. Well, I mean, if we wanted to keep signage consistent, then we wouldn't have mixed match logos. So these would be, you know, long term signs.
Correct.
So that was an alternative that we can implement.
I say, but
Brian, I had a question. So are historic markers traditionally printed on both sides? And my other question is in at least in this example, well, one, I really like the content. I think that does a great job.
We've worked very hard on that.
But the letting, the space between the lines seems very tight, and I think that makes it a little difficult to read. Is that just
They're one inch. The font is one inch, which was recommended by all of the companies to make it easier to read.
The font, the size of the font is okay, it's just the space between the lines make it the sentences too close together, is that a way of saying it?
Well, it, you lose content is the bottom line. If you can imagine how hard it is to tell a story in that amount of space, an obituary has more content than we're able to put on here. If you look at, you know, comparing how much content there is, if we put the spacing any differently, we would be giving up content.
I I thought you I thought you had one of those designs with your suggested content, maybe I'm I've misplaced it. Oh, I see it, yeah.
And they'll vary a little bit from one to one based on the I mean, it's funny, even the examples from the other vendors, one of them is really tight and one of them is less tight.
So I'm assuming that image at the bottom of there's not a page number around here, the Lake Shore sample that has your Cock and Mill Park
Page nine.
Language on it, yes, that the bottom image might be a QR code.
It is.
Would there be more space without that QR code?
You pick up another line. Maybe another one more line, but again, if you you can only fit so many characters on there. So I don't know that you're really gaining a whole lot. And keep in mind, this is a forty-five inch sign.
Could you ask them specifically if they can ask if they can add more letting? Just just ask them if they can add more letting, they'll know what that means. And the letting is the space between the the sentences.
Maybe that last line could come down next to the QR code and then they could all be just a little bit.
Just needs a little bit more space in there.
Letters inch, right? Yeah, each month would be an inch. So if you're having a hard time reading that, you're not going to read it anymore.
Just talk about the space between the lines.
No, I know, you're saying this is we can have them come back and give us another, that's the beauty of having the digital rendering, right? You can have them come back. You only get so many free before it's so much a rendering, what fifty bucks?
Let's let's have a quick conversation offline.
Oh, hell.
Right, and and I think I think we can figure that out.
How many are you trying to do to start? Oh, just get one one done first.
Yeah, right.
There are six months late time, so you know, the thought is you get them rolling so that you get, you know, you get them coming in every month or so. So I'd leave in ten would be the
Could you ask them, and you may have this in in your package, the actual print dimensions for the content? Because then what I can do is print that out on a larger piece of paper and just see it may look fine, but it's just hard hard to see in a small example.
The dimensions from
The print space of the content space.
So you're talking about from
They can probably send you a full size PDF, right?
Yeah, that would be good, a full size PDF, and then that way I can just print it out.
I have the full PDF email.
Okay.
You can scale.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's good enough.
That's good.
Sorry, you've got people appear that have done catalogs and things like that and kerning and all that are just part of
I know.
Great, Brian, was there anything else, were any other questions for Brian?
You're thinking about the size of the letters, and I'm thinking about just get a bigger sign.
It's it's good that we're making progress on this finally, thanks. Appreciate appreciate you guys bearing with it.
What is the next step? We need, what is the next step we need to take?
We're going to talk real quick after the meeting just about the the turning issue, but
One more question, do you have any anticipated timeline when you'll have the content for the other nine signs?
Be honest with you, we've not put any energy into it until we get one and we know exactly what we're dealing with. Because when you're, once we know the number of characters we're going to have here, this one, I believe, is one hundred and twenty-three words. That gives us a benchmark to say this is this is what we can fit on here. So before we really get too deep into other signs, we need to get one perfected. So one sign may cost less or more.
No, they'll be the same size, same same size, price, sorry. They will give us a discount to commit to ten over two years. So they're the only ones who gave us a multi unit discount.
I don't like sense, you guys can do the text as as they're coming and
I don't
Everything is
I mean, at least at least it's moving.
They were all consistently, they were consistently twenty, twenty-four weeks late.
True, probably get this question answered before Tuesday, so we're good, thanks, Brian.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, next, awesome.
Round two.
Yeah, yeah.
Same thing. We've been dealing with this project for about a year. Tom, you may remember at the work session we had last February where we we did a group demo. We're now at the point where legal has signed off on the contract. Suresbe is donating the development of the app for no charge, it's a community give back program. Basically, they're only charging us their their cost to maintain the app or Android and Apple, because Apple does have monthly fees. And every time you have a phone update, they have to do something. We have it is very scalable, but what we discussed in the work session we were in was we would have cemeteries, historical sites, churches, parks, parks is also going to benefit from this and municipal. So any visitor will have those categories they can choose from to navigate the city.
And that's via the QR codes like on the signs and just on the website.
Mobile app.
It's a visitor app.
Okay.
So my question about that was when I first saw this, I guess I didn't realize it was the historic commission. And I was thinking it was a convention and visitors bureau. Do we know, are they doing, and that's a traditional thing, a convention and visitors bureau does and has on their website. Are they doing something similar or do we know?
I don't think we know, I think.
Do we need to check in with them? Because this is sounds really like under their function.
No, well, yeah, okay, you're you're going to those. Probably.
That would be my question.
They don't have any plans to do that, Robbie?
But we should let them know about it, right? So that they can, you know,
Integrate their design to their
You can piggyback on it. This will also basically, I think, ultimately replace the one the parks are using today. They've not been happy with that one. And they've seen the demo and they've they're on board with it as well.
Can we see a demo?
Because of the time lapse, the demo has gone dormant. I have, I can show you some printouts of it, but the the demo at this point, unless we move forward, the developer is taking it back down because we we've been so delayed with it.
Kind of want to see what it looks like.
We have a we have a digital or paper markup I can go through with you.
That'd be good.
Any question?
Other questions, anyone? Twice in one night, thanks, Brian. Next up is a budget discussion on the twenty-four budget. And before you dive into the budget, if you would, just lay out the timeline again for everybody so that they're reminded of what that is.
Hi, I'm good. Hey, good evening, Mayor Council and staff and community residents. We are at the Budget Cyclists Work Session that we're having to talk about it at a thirty thousand foot level, if you will. The timeline is going to be that we're going to have advertise it next month in May. Because you have to have two public hearings, have the first public hearing at the first meeting in June. And the second one, I'm hoping to adopt it is do what we did last year and maybe do it virtually close to the end of the of the month of June. Because then we have a better idea, Michelle and I, what the fund balance is going to look like, so we can be more accurate and it helps us with our audit that regard too. So it'll be first read in June, the first meeting in June, the council meeting. So this right here is just going over where we're at today with the with at the work session. And what I've provided is what I do every year is a budget memo. It kind of goes over to different funds. And I also like to tell you what you see in your packet right now is actually different. Updated budget I have and will pass out to you tonight, you can take home and read when you get home. In matter of fact, this one changed at about four twenty today, no, wait, five twenty today. Because I was updating information based on a call we had today with our healthcare providers, because we're doing open enrollment and there's been some changes to that. So this one was outdated at five twenty. They all didn't say that, you know, when you see this, there's going to be some changes, but not big changes. As as a mayor knows, what we do is we set the revenues first. We go in there and say, okay, let's project our revenues realistically where we're going to be. And those are in your packet, the revenue projections. And then we start going from that point and say, okay, let's go through the general fund expenditures. That's operations and general fund is what we look at. And one thing I wanted to say, this capital is in there too. So we got capital, which each department, if they need a vehicle, if they need equipment, those kind of things come into capital grants. I'll talk about that too, ARPA, that's that's our grant, LMI, Local Maintenance Improvement Grant, those kind of things. And capital, when Lisa was up there talking, I was standing back there and the mayor and I and Darryl talked about this. Brickworks has needs. And so what we did was we put twenty thousand dollars in capital in public works or facilities. So that comes out of our capital funds that we'll have. So they'll have that money to do fans and to do electricity and those kind of things. So we, that's in the budget right now. So and I I want her to know that and I see call it back here too. So that's that's there. But the budget memo really ties together everything. And again, like I said, it's changed, I don't want to get too deep into percentages and those kind of things. But you can see that the overall budget is is different than it is now. But like last year, it was ten point three million and ten point seven million now. Again, it's a little different. And we get into the general fund, that's operations, it's four point one, and it's going to go to four point six. So it's like eleven percent increase, but that's actually less because we went in there to do some more cutting that we're trying to do to get that down. Because as the budget progresses over the next two, four, six, eight weeks, you know, and a fun balance starts dipping down a little bit, you know, I don't go in to the budget and say, oh, we're fifty-eight thousand dollars short because of XYZ. Let me go increase this revenue to fifty-eight thousand dollars to fix that. That's not what we do. We go say, where can we find a cut to address this? Where can we make these adjustments? So that's what we do now. Debt service fund is going up. As you can see in the memo from two oh three to two seventy-five, that's due to the pumper, tanker, pumper, which is great.
Pumper tanker, tanker bumper.
New engine. The one we pushed in, and so that that's why that service is going up. But we have one more payment. If you remember, six years ago, so seven years ago, Darryl came before you and was like second day at work and said, hey, can I have half a million dollars to buy his equipment? We're like, who is this guy? But so you gave it to him and that's going to be that equipment is going to be paid off. So we got one more payment coming up on that. Hotel motel fund, we talked about it and Brian, Brian was here tonight talking about some projects that are coming through. You know, it's going down because we're spending. It's also going down because more money is going to be going to the Commission and Visitors Bureau because it's going to go from thirty-two point one four percent to forty-three point seven five percent that they get from hotel motel fund. And so that's going down a little bit. We're we're trying to be conservative in our projections there. There was some fun bounce that which we're not supposed to have, but it is what it is. You can't just, you still have to spend it. Even if you don't spend it through the year, you start to spend on tourism, product development. You can't just say, wow, we got fun balances, put in a general, you know, the department revenue will get you for that. And I told you about the grants fund, we've been using the state and local federal relief fund, which is ARPA money and and for bonuses and such, and we've been spending that money. We've got till basically December twenty, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five to spend that money. And we've been using it, for instance, you know, we renovated City Hall to move community development down the hall and 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 took care of those, took care of those things that helped us address this. It was like seventy thousand dollars. We did not have to take out of Darryl's budget to do that because we use that for ARPA. We've used some for for public safety for ARPA specifically. And of course, I told you about the bonuses. Capital fund, you can see we're allocating, and I've got copies of the capital fund too. Because right now, you you have the statement revenues and expenditures, revenues specifically and expenditures specifically. But the details behind those I have here, and I want you to take that with you so you can look at even. I know that they've changed a little bit, but they're still pretty close. And it gives you a general idea of departments where they where they were, where they're going. And then we get into T-Splus, T-Splus is increasing because we've got this fun balance. So yes, it's going up, but we got a big project going to be led on the streets here pretty soon. So it's increasing, it needs to increase. Now, next year, that number won't be the same, that that'll be gone, we hope. It will, because we're going to use that plus money that you've programmed for capital to do roads, as the mayor talked about. They were looking at two point four plus million dollars to do on roads, and that's going to happen. And then you can look down into reserve or contingency. That's going to fluctuate completely because what that does is what's left that's not allocated by you, the American Council, that's going to go into your reserve contingency. We like to have at least seventeen percent, we always end up with twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two percent in there. But we like to have at least seventeen, that's what's in our financial policies to make sure we have that. And then you can't really see the print at the very bottom, but this is the the good chart that I like to see with all different funds. And it shows where we have we gone from last year to this year. And that's kind of a real high level view. I can talk about a few things that changed. For instance, tonight, you've noticed some audio video issues that we have. I've programmed it, well, in addition to that, what apparently somebody came when I when they Apparently somebody came when I, when they say participants, when I say, I told Darryl back there, I said, look, when it says admit, look at the name first. If it's like some kooky name that's made up and it's hard to know, it could be a normal name. So we admit people. We don't just say, we're not going to admit them. We don't know. And this person. Decided to take over co-host or something. And anyway, so we're, we put in a budget to allow one of the guys from the that installed this. To come here and do this back here for us, for the council meetings, for the work session council meetings. So that way your staff can be up here engaged with you. Not back here. Other stuff, which Greg took my blood pressure or Darryl did after that happened because my shot up real high. Break down a bit. So um, some of those things are in the budget. Uh, we did uh. We did add, um, because you guys have talked about it at every meeting for the last few months, we we added another police officer to the budget. So there's another police officer in the budget that. Uh, will be able to fill that role and that position. Um, what's not in there right now is in capital. I still have to allocate money. To another vehicle for that officer, but we can, there's money in capital to allocate that. I just haven't done it yet. Or we can even use ARPA money if we need to. That's the beauty of ARPA. It, public safety is a nice area for capital expenditure. So that's in there. Trying to think of those other big things. Uh, you guys, if you have any questions, you can ask me. And this is a higher level. I just wanted to introduce you to where we are with the budget unless you take these copies with you and and review them and we can still have. I'll be glad to meet with anybody one on one. The mayor and I will be glad to meet with councils one on one, two on twos as we continue to move forward. You know, this very public process, I'll put this on the website and I'll keep updating it on the website as it gets updated.
Robbie, I don't remember. Um, I know on the one on one, we talked about this. I don't remember if you mentioned it tonight, that that. That person we want to hire that might split the position for grant writer to community support, you know. Jack of all trades, is that in this budget or?
That's not in the budget, but we can, we can make it happen because what I'm thinking, it would be a mid-year budget adjustment because. The person that I'm thinking about, it 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 won't be available till probably next February. So in the meantime. Um, we can do other, I I did, I did actually, it's been about six months ago. I did some like RFPs, RFQs for grant writing services. So we can actually hire a company that charges by the hour, typical consultant. Sometimes it's a hundred fifty dollars now. They don't do it based on grants. Like, hey, we get ten percent and do that, but we can go that route if you, if we need, if we solve something out there.
So Robbie, you know, the person other than that person you're waiting on or something?
There's, there's plenty of other people. This, this individual just because I had conversations with him over the last several months and. He's interested in chat heels because he he buys into our vision. He loves our vision. Um, he's just in a position right now where he wants to get vested. In that particular retirement system, if you will. Um, and again, I'm not saying that. He's given us a green light to come. He's very interested in in coming and because he's a certified planner. Remember the AICP, so he can come in and basically what you would have is another planner. This person is also a special projects director for another city. So any projects that come along that the city manager. Can't or won't do or doesn't want to do or doesn't have a capacity to, he takes those over. So it's just, is is a very unique. Individual and uh it's.
So.
It's not the only person.
I see we have a grant writer in the room that's not ours, but you know, we love her anyway. So could there be an opportunity? I mean. There is the hiring of someone to work on a specific grant. What I'd like to see is hiring someone to go find us grant money to fix the kitchen. That kind of specific, we have, we know we have that need, right?
And we have money budgeted for that type of of grant writing assistance. So we do have some money in the budget. That comes under the finance department and professional services.
So, so again, to underline that, that is the plan that you were going to be following up on, that we're going to be doing that contract basis that we hired this other guy. Right? Because that's what we've all talked about.
And we, yeah, that's available now today. So you know, grant writing can be very unique. Federal grants are a little bit different, a little more difficult. Local grants, I was on a call earlier this week uh for a recreation type of grant. Um, and I don't think it's going to fit for us, but I still didn't want to miss an opportunity to have that discussion on that.
So we did have a work session to talk about. Um, council's priorities on the on the hotel motel funds we could spend. Um, I don't know that we've had a work session to talk about what grant kind of things we want, or if we just say. Yeah, the kitchen is high on the list. Let's work on that one. Right. Did you have any other ideas? Uh, or? Okay.
Yeah, in the very last page, when I hand this out to you, this spreadsheet, get to my, this spreadsheet right here is a great spreadsheet. This actually tells us year to date what we spent exactly in hotel motel, where it's been spent. So it gives us an idea where we are and you you got, we've been doing a great job with hotel motel fun spending, but this is, take a look at this too when I give it out.
Dana, you you caught that, right? Yeah, thanks. Uh, because I'll forget, even though I wrote it down twice. Uh, one other thing, just as a high level thing that I I will say this every time we talk about the budget, just so that people don't have the wrong thing in their head. We talk about a ten million dollar budget and that is because we have been saving up money for a couple of years. Because we know that our paving budget goes further when we do more at once. You get a better price, the more miles you do. And so we've been doing some kind of spot work in between to get ready for that bigger paving job. Uh, but that's part of why the budget looks so big. It, government accounting is. The most ridiculous thing I've ever seen. You have to count your assets as income every year. Uh, it's not income, obviously. Uh, so there's that. And the other thing too is as always, uh, we are budgeting very conservatively. Which means that even though the the bulk of our taxes, which come from property taxes are about two and a half million, we will probably make a little more. And on a lot of the other categories that are like that, we will probably make a little more. We always do. And we also budget in the department so that if something comes up that they. Aren't prepared for, it can fit into what they've already budgeted without there being an emergency, basically. And what that means is at the end of the year, we always have some extra money that we start saving up for the next big paving project set, right? But I just don't want people to think that there's all this extra money and we should go have a big party or something because it's just not like that.
Yeah, a lot of those funds are restricted. You can't spend them.
Well, and like the ARPA money is one of those things that came in one time from the federal government. It will never happen again, at least. Um, till the next huge disaster, but you know, it it's not something that you can count on. So. I I just, we're very conservative with this and I just want to make sure that we keep that front of mind all the time. Any other questions on the budget? We had a couple of things that we put on there. There, there were uh some issues, this list of issues that had been. Yeah, that's, I'm going to talk through these, okay, these other ones that are on here. So anyway, this list of issues that we had wanted to talk about and I just kind of spread them out over the the meetings that have been coming up. Uh, because of uh the level of work that's been going on in the last few weeks, uh, we are not ready to have. Uh, two of these conversations, one, I'm not even sure that we need to have anymore. The arts commission discussion, we've kind of had some conversation. As we've been talking through on the other commissions, that there's probably just not staff capacity and enough demand for that at the moment to even move that forward. So unless anybody objects to that, I'm just going to pull that back for now. And the communication plan thing, that's been something that Lori had been talking about quite a bit with Ruby and and again, just didn't have time to get ready for that for this meeting. So we'll push that to the next meeting if that's okay. Uh, because I don't want to talk about something that we're not ready to talk about. Uh, again, we'll talk on the grant prioritization at the next meeting as well. And then Darryl had a conversation he wanted to have with us about gravel roads and production activities.
Nice to see you. Uh, if you remember the last council meeting, we discussed. Direction from y'all. Uh, so you know, the filming industry, we've grown in our city tremendously lately. And it's going to just keep getting bigger. And what I'm asking from y'all uh is. The allowance of filming when the only entrance to a film location to a property is on a gravel road. Uh, so I lo- I wrote down a few things that that brought to my interest. Uh, usually. If you remember when I first started here, that was the priority that y'all gave me. Like Robbie said, the money that we spent for gravel roads and the money we spend every year. To maintain our gravel roads. I believe our gravel road is better than any road in the state to me. We spend a lot of money and a lot of time. And the gravel roads are not designed for heavy trucks and a heavy traffic. When they were built many years ago, they didn't have the found, the base and the foundation that we have now. So we've restructured them to try to bring them up to best we can. Um, also they're narrow laned gravel roads. Uh, there's some roads that people, residents want to keep them narrow. And then some places there's a little bit wider so you can pass in their areas. So. Uh, when usually when the film people come through, they have a base camp. It's usually all, all seen, all set where they're going to be filming it. So what they do is they ha- have buses that haul the actors. And the workers back and forth, back and forth. You know, this every day, all day long. Um, also, uh, you got the heavy trucks that bring all the material in and then they bring it out. And then on a gravel road, if you, if you realize when you have a gravel road, the entrance to the property, the railroad, they have to go across. To swing wide to get out, which when you have two vehicles on a gravel, narrow gravel road. And you have a truck, eighteen wheeler hauling, there's somebody who have to get into a ditch, which ruins the ditches. Let's see, uh, vans past traffic narrows, pulls, yep. And so what it does is when this damage happens, you know. Our grading crew, we have one grading crew, that half a million dollars bought us one motor grader, one rubber tire, run, one dump truck. And y'all will know that they run every day. When it's not raining, they're on a gravel road fixing. And scraping and restructuring gravel road. So what happens the last two times is this happened in the last six months. That our crews have to either stop before and get the gravel road ready or afterwards or during. Have to go maintain or fix or restructure the gravel, gravel roads. And some we've had, uh, the last two, we've had them add gravel on the small sections because it's a very short section from the a main road to it. So they, they offered up that money and then we did start putting bonds in for damages. But my. This is a lot of, lot of, lot of extra for a grading crew. There's no way. Also, there's no, well, Robbie tells me never say there's no way. Uh, it just puts more pressure on the grading crew. We're already stay busy every day and then when this happens, we have to stop what we're doing and go. And then you have residents that call me. I thought I was the next on the list and then we have to stop and go spend a couple of weeks. And if you have heavy traffic. And heavy trucks, they damaged road. Um, like, we are, I mean. That causes a lot of damage and a lot of money and you had to restructure. You remember how many years it took us to get these roads? In the condition and that was with no trucks running up and down them. So if we allow trucks to damage the gravel roads. It's going to be restructuring. So it takes more time, a lot more time there to bring the gravel road back up to the standard we have. So what I'm asking y'all is. Guidance or or is this something that we? Cause we're the ones that say yes and no. And if if residents get mad because they have a right to their property. Then they look at me, why, why are you not letting this happen? And then the city spends a lot of money to maintain the gravel roads. So. We, if y'all know filming, the city doesn't make money off that. We get a few, you know, permits and costs that. But it doesn't, we don't receive a lot of money for filming.
It's not covering the cost of.
That, that's exactly right.
And 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 that's the key, right? So so a couple of things there. One thing that you just said is a fact for the people that are renting their land out that way. Can be a significant source of income, right? It's one of the things that they can do on their land.
Yes, sir.
And and you know, I think about some of the local businesses that have done that, that are able to stay afloat because of that money or or churches. Where it's been a big benefit and yet we know that there was a huge impact on the roads because of that. One of the things you've been doing lately and and we saw this with the the striping that they just did, right? Is if we're clear upfront with them, what the costs are going to be, generally speaking, they're like, okay. Uh, and and so how easy is it to capture that? I get it, right? I mean, you'd you'd need to be paid for not only the work that's being done, but also the hassle factor to your point. Of having to pull off of somewhere else and come do this.
And there, there isn't, I mean, I live on a gravel road. There's not, there's not a good place to pull off and not everyone. Drives pickup trucks. So for my little Prius, you know, I sweat it out when Amazon's coming the other way.
And and you realize eighteen wheelers, several, there's several. And and the last film, a crew that's here now that come in, you know, ask them for money upfront because they needed, you know.
Right.
They needed this place and I was trying to work with them, doing the best I can to accommodate because they have rights, you know, people do. And we had them add gravel to a road, but what happened, our crews had, because they, they are demanding, they come in on Friday, most of the time, they want to film next week. And it happens very regular. And so what we had to do is hurry up over there, stop my crews from what they're doing and add the gravel. Which is nice that they give us money and do that, but it just sets everything else. But I know I'm repeating myself, it's just.
It's okay. It's okay that you're repeating yourself. So I mean, to my mind, again, there's, there's three elements of this, right? One is. Making sure we get the money that it takes to actually do the work that needs to be done. Two, if it's getting in the way of other work, they're paying us for hassle factor. Right? Like, and and the third one, because this is the other issue that we've had recently with some of these other ones, they commit in contract to fixing whatever they break. And then they disappear and how can you find them? And so now that we're starting to cause, to make them bonded. That, that solves that problem, right? Or or does it not?
But, but there's a fourth factor too, for the people that look on the gravel roads. I mean, it's not just the inconvenience. I mean.
Yeah, it's.
No, it is, right?
I have always tried to detour them to a paved road. It paved roads are the way to go if I have my way. I would say no every time. So I just need you to tell me.
Richie, is there any, is that something we could consider is, is, is?
You know, a lot of the Airbnbs, hotels, what do they do? They take a credit card. These production companies have huge credit cards.
The thing, the thing that I'm, I'm expecting is the next time that Tyler Perry or or. Uh, Michael Bay's or one of these guys comes down, they're filming some huge movie and we say no. Uh, somebody from the governor's office is going to be on the phone again. Uh, saying you guys like your uh T S plus money, right? Like, I, I, this is my worry. So, so they seem to have more money and they know what to do with. Let's make sure we get as much of it as we need to make it worthwhile, Darryl. I I think that's because they're going to make us do it anyway.
I say no. I say let the governor come down here on my skinny little gravel road and uh. And drive my Prius if he's trying to get around an eighteen wheeler and there is no place in my ditch for my Prius. So I say no, let him come down and then tell me I gotta do it.
So the governor actually take your T S plus money? That's voted on by the citizens and.
You can't take your T S plus, no, but they.
Then that would be an idle.
They can absolutely do stuff with you through DG dot.
We don't, we don't have the staff to be doing this. That's it's, I think it's a hardship for residents that live on gravel roads. And it may benefit the one or two residents whose property they use.
At the end of the day, they put up the money upfront and we hold the money. They get back the percentage after the cleanup and repairs done. And if not, you know, try another road. It's, it's still their choice.
One, and there probably are roads too, like a white side or whatever.
You just can't do it.
Can't do it.
Did we, did you potentially do like a level, like level one is these kinds of this kind of this road, only this is allowed on this, you know, and let, like different. Or you can know eighteen wheelers on.
A maximum.
Level one road.
Road like old Rico road is is plenty wide for that.
I don't know. Sort of scale it where it's not, not available. It's just certain roads are restricted.
I mean, Piney Woods Church Road, I mean, these little gravel roads, how are you going to do that? And in the meantime, those of us living on the gravel roads are just waiting and trying to deal with this, with the poor, you know. No, I'm, I'm sorry. That's, that's not.
There are some roads we couldn't have at all. I mean, like if, if, you know, we're charging enough, really like a lot extra. In staff time, right? To make up for the hassle factor. I mean, I, again, I I see on your face, the answer is no, I'd rather just not.
No, I'm not, I'm, I work for y'all.
I mean, if they buy more gravel, at the end of the day, they put a little swerve in the road and they put three tread load of gravel on it, kind of doing us a favor. If you think about it, they're padding down the road even more and they're paying for it.
Well, if we pad what they're paying for, for sure.
Yeah, correct. So I'm saying, you know, at, at the end of the day, if you have enough money of theirs, that's the way it works in the real world.
I like Camille's, um, Camille's options, which sounds like a compromise. Let's look at the size of these gravel roads and then do a tiered thing.
That's, that's going to be hard because you got, it's my opinion is you have residents that are going to, you know, live on them roads that they have. Rights that, you know, that we've, we see this all the time. Residents want to do what they want on their property. And so I bought this road, you know, years ago, I bought my house on this one road and now you you can, but I can't. So that's why it kind of worries me.
Do they ever film on the dead end roads?
Just, I can't really.
As I'm thinking about it, I'm trying to think of where they.
Honestly, I have tried to stop as much as I could throughout the years until there's some that offer up enough to make it happen. Until the last few times where it's become really big problems.
Well, someone just told me today that on Jones Ferry Road, a movie studio came by to check out a property and there were 30 cars on there.
Maybe they have to hire traffic folks on those if it's that narrow and pay for it.
Man, I'm going to gravel roads. Come on down White Side Road, you know?
I just need y'all to really just say to me if if we want to keep permitting gravel road filming or not, this.
Different input today. Let's, let's work to come up with something that we can bring to the council to talk about.
The money part of it, we have a decent solution for me. You need to tune in a little bit. That's okay. It's really capacity.
Which roads and capacity, yeah. All right, no, I get it. I get it.
And time, get it repaired.
Right.
Because we got a crew that works.
That's, that's.
That's all we do. If they want to give us money, another half a million dollars and then plus three more staff members, that'd be, yeah, we'll do it.
Well, and that's the question, right? Like, you know, is it enough to get you an extra staff member to, over the course of a year, if we charge enough for it? Does that make sense? That's, yeah, for sure.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Darryl. Anybody else have anything else they want to talk about? No, if not, I will see you Tuesday. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for being with us, folks. Oh, movie night, yeah, movie night on on Saturday at six o'clock, 6:30, 6:30 at the Rico Park.
Yep.
And it's Field of Dreams, right? And there's popcorn. Parking on.
Upper Wooton.
Upper Wooton for the.
One way only for the evening. Thanks to residents. I just got cut off. And now we're, now we're getting cut off.